We go ahead and call the...
Make some good minutes.
We go ahead and call the work session that... The night is just work session only, but we do have two agendas of work today, Evelyn.
Good afternoon, Board. This will be our work session agenda. As we go down that agenda, the first thing, you have consent agenda. The meeting minutes from our last meeting is in your packet, as well as the request for field trips. There are three. Number three is student community recognition. I have invited the gold medal winners from Sullivan Central High School CTE, and also the silver medal winners from Sullivan East CTE to our meeting next Thursday for recognition. I've also extended an invitation to Scott Murray, our Highway Commissioner, to attend the meeting for us to applaud the efforts of himself, as well as the Highway Department for the recent road activity that has been going on in and around Westridge High School. Additionally, what I would give you this evening before you... The first page in what I've given you at your desk is a copy of our opening schedule. You'll see that that is the week of August 2nd. You'll see that there's a lot of concentration of time being spent in schools. That's usually not the norm. We do spend a lot of time during that week on staff development. Been in light of what has gone on this summer in our school district with so many teachers relocating, we felt that it was important to keep teachers in their buildings as much as possible, spend time with their administrative staff, learn the buildings, spend a lot of time on their safety protocols. So I think we've done a good job at doing that. I would add to this that for the four schools that we have coming together this summer, which is Westridge, Holston Elementary, Sullivan Central Middle, and Sullivan Heights Middle, we actually brought them in two days this week, Tuesday and Wednesday. And they spent the morning on Tuesday in their own buildings. And Tuesday afternoon, all four schools came together at Northeast State for a collaborative meeting and a presentation from a speaker Jessica Holden... Jessica Stallings Holder. And she did a really good job talking about merging the staff and forming a new team. And we were really pleased with how the day went. They were back in their schools yesterday for group meetings again. I've contacted and talked with each of those four principals. I've visited some of their buildings. I did not make it to all four, unfortunately, but I've gotten really good feedback from the four, very appreciative of having the opportunity to spend these two days with their new staff, getting to do some team-building activities, have some fun, and work at the same time. And they've been very, very pleased. And I'm glad that we were able to do that and make that happen for them. But that is a quick look at what our opening schedule will be like next week. The second thing that I wanted to bring to your attention is the possibility of a ribbon cutting for Westridge High School. I did mention at our last board meeting that that date would be forthcoming. Currently, we've... We're looking at August 17th at 9:30 in the morning. I wanted to check your schedules this evening to see if that was an entertainable date. If not, we can certainly look at something different. We thought that we would pattern it much like how we did our ribbon cutting at Sullivan East Middle. We'll have it outside, if at all possible. If not, certainly we can move it inside, but we would like to have that as a date to possibly look at a ribbon cutting at Westridge and then add some open houses around that date. August 17th at 9:30 in the morning. Does that present any challenges?
I shouldn't be there, but I mean, I wouldn't be able to be there, but that's okay.
Is there a date that works better for you?
You just have to tell me so I can look at it.
It might be easier if you tell me.
You mean before or after that date?
After. Do you have anything close to that date that you'd be available?
I think on the 18th.
The 18th? I think we can do the 18th. Rick Wagner's saying he's trying to log in to the work session, and he says all it's doing is buffering.
That is correct. Wi-Fi is not good right now.
Okay. I'll tell him to check it again. Okay, so we're going to look at the 18th. Sarah is working with Dr. Davis on that schedule and trying to put that together. So I hope all of you can attend. I think you're going to be very, very proud of this facility, and I definitely want everyone to be involved. And at the end of our meeting today, I do have some slides that I'll be able to share with you to give you an update. The last thing I have on my list is the org chart, which is also in that packet of papers that I've given you. That is for your review to look at. This is what I've pulled together since I've been here. There are a few things that are TBTs to be determined. And we are still working on those, but I don't see any issue or problems with taking care of that in the very near future. Any questions so far on anything that I've covered? To... From board meeting minutes to field trips, anything? All right, at this time, I would turn it over to you, Pat, for an update on closing schools and property updates.
Well, things continue to move forward there. Beginning with the Bishop property that we voted to purchase and have under contract now. I did get a call asking when we wanted to schedule that closing, and I told them I would need to get back to them. I sort of heard the thought that we might change our mind about having the geothermal done. I haven't heard anything more about that, so I'm going to assume that's not going to take place. So I will schedule that. I don't know that anybody would be there. Maybe Mr. Jones, I guess. But anyway, we'll get that scheduled as soon as we can get that done. Colonial Heights Middle School, I've been in touch with the surveyor there and the appraiser, both working on that. I think they should have the survey done for sure in the fairly near future. The Bluntville School, as you know, the title to that is just not... Just not a simple thing. So the attorney is working on the title exam, has been for quite a while, and I'm not even sure that we can locate all the county records that might come into play there, from what I understand. So a lot of effort is going into that. I guess my position is, you know, there's not any doubt that we, the school system and/or the county, own that property, but it's just a matter of getting all the documentation together. But we will have that. And I also talked to the surveyor there. He said he was just about finished up, so I'll have that in hand fairly soon, and I'll share that with you. And I thought that we might learn some more about the source of the title and so forth, based on his work. So that's a little... It's a little more involved there, but we're moving on forward. Should have you really by... I don't know that we'll have it for the next board meeting next week, but soon we'll have you that information that you need. And finally, we are going to auction the old Paperville School property, and that bid opening will be August the 18th. So you might want to tell everybody you know it and take a look at it. I'll be glad to give them a tour. And I think that's all I have.
On the Bluntville property, you mentioned there's three eminent domain connected to that. Were all of those eminent domains done in favor of the school system? In other words, for the school system? Do you know that yet?
Well, that depends on how you define that. I don't mean to sound like some famous evasive person, but it depends on what you mean by "is," I guess. Now, from what I'm told, they did do three separate eminent domain proceedings. They cannot find the record of all of them. So I don't know whether the court file says Sullivan County or the Sullivan County Board of Education. I do have every reason to believe that those cases were for the purpose of the school property.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Yeah, that's what I... I have every reason to believe that, so.
Because eminent domain cannot be done just for any reason. Is that correct? It has to be done for a specified reason, to benefit the public?
Right. It is... I mean, there are restrictions on it. It's supposed to be, you know, for public use. And I feel confident those were. If you've looked at those things, those schools, you know, they, down through the years, they'll just decide, well, we need a ball field, you know, and so let's just get this property over here and put the ball field on there. And I do know of some instances where they just plowed ahead and didn't really bother with all the necessary paperwork. So it very well could be that that's what these situations are.
Can I ask a question? Did we send a letter to the Commission to clarify our position on this?
No, we're going to try to set a meeting up with their attorney and see what their...
Talk through it that way?
See what their desires, what their purpose is. If that's what you're asking about, what we discussed.
Are they still under the impression that they own it, or do you know?
We don't know for sure, and that's why we wanted to set a private meeting up with our attorney, Evelyn, and possibly me and their attorney.
Attorney Street's been on vacation.
I know that the mayor's contacted a private citizen and told him it was a done deal and that he's asked for a meeting with that private citizen. So just know that when you go.
Okay.
Any other comments before I move to item five? Item five is policy 3.211, new project planning. It is in your packet. This really wasn't on my radar until a meeting this week with Chris Davis from Purchasing and also Mr. Hull was present. And the point in this policy that's in question is item number three, fees shall not exceed 5%. Actually, the federal dollars that we're getting and going to be able to expend, say that have a ceiling, I mean, a low ceiling there of 6%, which our... I first said to Mr. Hull, well, if that's the case, then we could waive our policy. But it came out that it might just make more sense for us to just remove that one piece from this policy. And I would ask Mr. Hull if he's got anything to add to that.
I do not. And just from talking to Chris Davis, my understanding is that various federal laws have various amounts set out that the fees are required. And, you know, that's probably true maybe in some state projects and things. I guess at one time the idea was to set that, and we could fall back on that and say, well, we're not paying any more than that. But at this point, I just... I don't think it's realistic. And rather than try to put a number in there that might meet a need today, probably just be better to take the whole thing out. We'd just have to do it on a case-by-case basis.
In this policy, I will be asking for waiver of rules and to adopt on first reading. Are there any questions? Next item on the agenda is flu clinic. From every year, we give flu shots in our school district, and this is just asking permission for us to continue that. And this is just flu shots, no other kind of flu shot or vaccination or anything like that. This is the common flu shot that is given annually in our schools. Are there any questions about the flu clinic that we offer annually to our staff and students? The next item on your agenda is bus contracts. That is not an action item on our board agenda. Again, Mr. Hull, as well as others, and I met yesterday in conversation about our current bus contracts and the new bus bids. There are some questions about the bids. And in light of the new law passed just recently by the legislature... light of the new law passed just recently by the legislature, as far as bus contracts can be for six years now versus the four years, we want to entertain that as a part of our bus bid and be able to look at that with our bus, with the bidding process. So we are looking at rebidding our bus contracts. So that is something that you won't see until the September, more, more than likely the September board meeting. Would you add anything to that, Mr. Hull?
That'd just be the ones that are up for renewal now. How many are there?
Billy, what was that total number for?
There's 32.
32.
Will our, will our current contract stay in place until we rebid?
We will be okay there.
Okay.
Any questions before we move into a little bit of a lengthy part of our meeting, but an enjoyable part?
I wasn't really planning for it, it was a lengthy.
Oh, it's gonna be lengthy, Ms. Buckles. All right. The next, the next several items you see on your agenda, ESER 2.0, ESER 3.0, and the ELC grant, which is epidemiology and laboratory capacity grant. I'm gonna ask Ms. Buckles to come to the podium, and we're gonna walk, she's gonna walk us through this. Ms. Buckles and the leadership team have been heavily involved in working through these federal dollars. Never in the history of, as far as I know, have our school districts been faced or been given the amount of monies that are coming our way. With each grant, there are different stipulations. And Ms. Buckles has done the submissions. She's done the resubmission, and the resubmission, and the resubmission. She's worked through these, and she has been outstanding in getting this done. So I've asked her to walk us through what we have done at this point. And what I would remind the board as we go through this is, number one, I would ask you to make notes and have your questions ready. We have made submissions, but that doesn't mean we can't make changes and resubmit. But we had deadlines that we had to meet, and we didn't meet in July, in early July. So that, that pushed us on a timeline, and timeline. And we wanted to make sure that we were close, if at all possible, with our submission. Now, that being said, I want to make sure that the board has input and lets us know what you think about these, these ideas. And you may have ideas of your own, which we're very happy to entertain and, and let you tell us what you'd like to see us change. So I would ask again that you take notes as we go through, and if there's something that you have a question about, make a, you know, please be sure and ask as we go through. Ms. Buckles?
So first, I would say, just because I pushed the button to submit, it was not just me, it was the rest of the league team that was sitting there, working through this every time that I went through it. So by far, it was not just me, I'm just one part. So even though it feels like forever ago, 1.0 only came along a little over a year ago. But I'm giving you a sheet of what was allowable then, because it's hard to remember, because there had been different stipulations on everything. So in ESER 1.0, if you'll remember, that was just so that we could maintain schools and keep schools going. And even if that was in a virtual setting, that's how we, that's how we were charged to spend our money. So we spent money in 1.0, because we had no idea 2.0 or 3.0 or any of the others would come along. We planned to do long-term closures if that was necessary, and obviously that did occur. We were also able to do things that we might need for special ed populations. We spent a lot of money purchasing technology so that we would become a one-to-one district so kids could have those devices to take home, and we are a one-to-one district now. Without that money, there's no way we could have had enough devices to send home to everybody, K through 12. We also were able to do things for summer learning or supplemental after-school programs, which did include, they also went into that online, which obviously we did do that when we developed a virtual learning academy. We could do things with mental health services. We did do that. We purchased the services of some mental health counselors through Frontier Health, and those were deployed to the schools. When we were not in session and were at home, they actually did call families and families, check them in, and were available via phone for those families. And then the last one was anything else necessary to continue services. The 1.0 allocation was a little over $2 million. And I listed some of the things that we spent the money on. We did, we did hire a coordinator to help us when we developed a virtual learning academy to help us get those students enrolled, because that was a major task to make sure everybody kept their full schedule, either through a, their homeschool or through another school in the district. We did pay substitutes. I think this came along, if I remember right, around December. We did pay substitutes above their normal salary for substituting. We voted to do $100, so we, that, that came along to help us with that. We did have a required allocation to private schools. They took us, they, they participated for about a month and a half there, and they decided that was nothing they wanted to be a part of, and they backed out. So they ended up only taking like $2,400 or something, small amount, when they realized what was gonna be involved, they decided they no longer wanted to participate. We did do some specialized things for some of our special needs students, as well as ESL and homeless students. Power School Assessment was something that we were already doing, and we just continued that. We were allowed to pick up that cost. Zern Edge Annuity and Schoology were additional items that we purchased to help when we were in the virtual environment, so that there was only one location that families had to go to, as opposed to four, five different apps. Of course, obviously, we bought Chromebooks, flips, and hotspots for those students who needed a hotspot. We also employed last year, and that was a one-year contract, three instructional tech coaches to, to go out to the schools to help teachers learn to get on these platforms and learn to teach in a virtual environment, because that really had to happen on the fly. And our teachers did a phenomenal job of taking that and running with that, and our tech coaches helped with that. And you can see on the next page, there are some other items. We did favorite devices for those tech coaches to use last year. Mental health services coordinator to help, to help us with Frontier Health. TNTP, which was work they were already doing with our schools, but they helped us through a virtual environment. And food and nutrition, and you all know what a, what a huge heavy lift that was for the food and nutrition department. And we used some of this money to replace lost revenue, because they had a lot of lost revenue, as well as employee costs. Transportation, which is generally not a very big expense, was a massive expense for them last year. And the use of antypical, what I would call antypical meal supplies. They were having to buy Styrofoam containers. I used the wrong verb, which is still.
You get.
Styrofoam containers with lids, because of having to deliver those to homes, and that's not something we would typically have on hand. And then PPE. At the time when we started and we purchased some protection equipment for our teachers and other staff, we didn't realize the state was gonna come along later and ship us literally thousands of gowns at one time. We still get some of those shipments, which is entertaining at the least. So that was 1.0. And as receipts came in, if there was, if we had overestimated the cost, we did try to shift some things out of 2.0 down into 1.0 so that, because the 1.0 money expires spring of '22. So we tried to shift some of the expenses that maybe were gonna come out of 2.0 into 1.0, and we're continuing to do that. That's why she said we continued to make resubmissions and resubmissions. And I have no idea how many we've done already and how many more we're gonna follow. But that is what we're doing. We are trying to make sure we use up all the 1.0 money first that's allowable, and we're just continuing to shift some of those costs down as we get receipts back. So 2.0 came along, and they allowed in 2.0 everything that was allowed in 1.0, and then also allowed for you to spend money on learning loss and for capital projects. School facility repairs and improvements, as long as those could be something that would help to deal with COVID. And I listed those there, and I kinda listed again the highlights for you from 1.0. So when 2.0 came along, the board voted to give a stipend, and so that's where the stipend came from, was 2.0. And I think that stipend, from the time we took care of all of our employees, at either $1,000 or $500, I think that was a little over 1.2 million. Is that right? So that's where the stipend came from, was 2.0. We also, at spring break, made all nurses full-time, so that they were there the entire length of the school day. 2.0 helped to pay for that, for the remainder of that year. And going into this year, they are on a full day as well. Tech infrastructure upgrades at all schools except for East Middle School. Obviously, why? We didn't need to do that at East Middle School. And I'll tell you what, little angle to stand about the tech infrastructure. It was new switches and new hubs, and Evelyn, you can throw in some more tech stuff, because I don't know, that's not my forte. But they did a lot of new wiring to make the, the internet, I guess, more stable, and to handle the number of devices we were dealing with. That was $300, $300,000. And that was an E-rate match, because there's some percentage we had. Evelyn will have to come in exactly, you know. I'm not good on that. But, so that was 300,000 of that. Buses for summer learning camps, at that point, we didn't know that they were going to, they had told us we had to do a learning camp in the summer, but we didn't know that they would come back with, with a little bit of transportation money. So originally, we had budgeted, I think, about $550,000 for that. We won't end up using all of that. Again, what we're not using will go towards whatever the board decides as far as capital projects. But we did allocate that for two years, for this current year we just had, and then next year. We did have FF-CRA expenses, and just a reminder of what that was. The government did say that we had to allow people to miss up to 10 days and pay them, and that was through Christmas. And then the board voted to do that for the second semester for the, for our employees, for anybody that might have a COVID issue in the second semester of last year. And that helped to pay for their accesses and to pay for, because we would have to pay for them to be at home, and then also to pay for sub, if we were able to get a sub. So that helped to offset some of that. And again, we were still trying to, reimbursements to the food and nutrition department. And we were able to shift some of that back to 1.0. The remaining money, which was, at last count, about 6.1 million was in school facilities. And so the next page, some of the things that have been undertaken, and I was trying to figure, I'll do my best to explain these. We did purchase a freezer-cooler combo at Rock Springs. They did not have one. They were having to move things from south down, and so having one on-site just made things a lot easier, a lot better moving forward. So we did purchase a freezer-cooler combo for Rock Springs. Obviously, anytime we have a capital project, we have to pay for an architect. So architect fees for these capital projects will come from, I guess, 9.1 million. Replacing the supply lines in classroom units, HVAC units at Central Middle School, as well as HVAC replacement at the CTE building at East High School. The handicap-accessible multi-purpose center to be built at West Ridge, that will help with social distancing and allow some of the classes to be out there. It'll also allow some of our support services, such as our social workers, to be there for families to access. Replacing eight rooftop HVAC units at Sullivan Heights Middle School. Replacing the roof at East High School CTE building. Replace the chiller at Sullivan Heights Middle. We will remove the old greenhouse houses, if you look at it, is actually to remove the greenhouses at Sullivan East Middle and replace that with a new horticulture classroom. We will also build a horticulture classroom at West Ridge for the ad classes to utilize. Holston Elementary, removing the carpet that was in the Holston building, the whole entire complex, replacing all of that carpet with tile. Indian Springs, replacing two rooftop HVAC units at Indian Springs. And again, as we are starting with some of those projects and getting some of those bills, and anything that's left over, then it'll go back to the board to determine for it.
I have a question, and it's just for clarification, because I don't know the terminology here. What's a horticulture classroom versus a greenhouse?
Well, a horticulture classroom is the exact same thing as a greenhouse, but when you are using.
It's the newer style.
Well, when you're using ESER funds, you have to be able to say, you're using this as a classroom. Got it. But it, it will replace with proper drainage, so that there's not water standing, and it'll replace with proper ventilation, so there's fresh air, and things that meet the mandate for.
Thank you.
So that was 2.0. And again, as we, as some of these projects are coming in and getting done, and any funds that are left over, that'll be to the board to decide what projects are next. That's one of the, I guess, one of the most fun parts about this, is you have to guess what a project costs before you have an architect who have drawn up the project, because you have to get it approved to pay for an architect's fee. And so that's kinda where we're at with 3.0 as well. We have to get this turned in to get the architect's fee approved, so the architect can tell us what projects we're facing. So that's why we have so many revisions. And we are, soon we'll be submitting 3.0, expecting lots of revisions. Our 3.0 allocation is, you can see that there, $20.6 million. The state does mandate that 20% of that has to go to learning loss. So you can see the math there, and that's $4.1 million, a little bit over 4.1. Has to be spent on learning loss. The remainder can be spent on capital projects, if that's the board's desire, and that would be about $16.4 million. You have a color sheet that looks like this, that, that does kinda give you a breakdown of what the state allows as a learning loss expense, and what they do not allow as a learning loss expense. But one way you can look at that is, anything that is tier one, or what should be normal every day, instruction in the classroom is not allowable for learning loss. So what you would think of is technically just going into the classroom every normal day and not into an intervention. Classroom does not count for learning loss. So keep that in mind as we go through this. So the, the guidelines, and I just kinda gave you some examples of things that we could spend the money on, and and these are things, some of these things are what we are considering, is before-after and summer school tutoring. We know that there's learning loss, and we know that the best way to address learning loss is honestly through tutoring, and to try to get that into, as the state likes to call it, high dose and low student-teacher ratios. You could also use for class size reduction, or what they're calling learning loss coaches, but that would actually be, just to reduce class sizes. You can purchase intervention programs and materials, and again, that's not a tier one material. That would have to be an intervention material or program. Transportation to before-after summer school programs or tutoring, you can pay for transportation. Supplies and materials for anything that you're doing with tutoring. Extended day, if you, if we did something with extended day or week programs to support students, and mental health supports. We did send a survey out to parents, asking, well, to the all stakeholders, asking for any input they'd like to give us regarding struggles that they've seen in their child and things that they think we can do. And some of the things that came back, and I went ahead and put an asterisk there for you, was before-after a summer school tutoring, they just mentioned tutoring in general. And obviously, one of the biggest hurdles we have anytime we have a tutoring program is transportation for those students to get back home, because if they stay after school, that's an issue. And honestly, summer school or summer school tutoring is an issue for transportation. And another highlight, which really isn't something that you address here, but just for the board's knowledge, is one of the major things that they did send back is, they do prefer in-person, just like the rest of us, if that's a possibility. That, that was another highlight that, that kinda came out of that survey. So that's kinda the ideas we have at this point for learning loss. And again, everything that, that we talk about, as we start to get test scores back, and we work with our principals to see where we need to go, that's how we'll start to address the learning loss. But the way this system is set up, we need to get 3.0 turned in, approved, and then we can always make the changes. But if we don't get it approved, we can't get architects hired to then do scopes of work. And this has a three-year, the money has to be expended in three years. It can't just be allocated. It actually has to be expended in three years, or you just lose it. So we're against that timeframe, too. So again, as we get test scores back, and we have tests to handle with our principals, then we may adjust a lot of things with learning loss. But I guess, quite frankly, the purpose, we want to try to get this turned in, so we can get 3.0 approved, and get some of the other projects moving, too. and get some of the other projects moving too.
I have a question. Thank you, first of all, for your work on this and your team's work on this. Exactly how is learning loss measured? Is it through a benchmark or some kind of universal screener?
So, that'll be up to us. That's not something the state is mandating, and we'll use progress monitoring. We'll look at failure rates and social promotion rates from last year and try to compare those. We will have test scores, but we don't have really any good comparisons, because there were no tests last year. And so, one of the things, maybe, will be honestly progress monitoring that we have, because we did have progress monitoring. We had our winter screener, as well as we kind of spring screener and fall. So, we do have progress monitoring data that we can use.
And kind of a follow-up to that, is there a way, then, to measure the effectiveness of these interventions? Or will that be also part of the development of all this?
So, that will be part of the development, but part of what we have to do when we spend money is obviously buy high-quality materials, and so, I would hope we would not buy something that we can't use a useful measure from. I mean, future observation does have value, but that's not the only measure. We need something that's backed by data, so.
Thank you.
To be clear, 1.0, have we, has that all been approved and been spent?
It has all been approved, and to be honest, I don't know if that final expenditure report's been yet. And we still have some time to make modifications. That one's not closed.
Don't know how much we've got left, or-
I know that we're close to being-
I think we have like 600 and some thousand left.
I'm not sure if we have that much left.
Okay.
I know we tried to move, what we had left, we've tried to move reimbursements to food and nutrition to 1.0, because it's allowable, and that frees up more money than 2.0.
So, what about 2.0?
So, 2.0, I'll, to be honest, I can't give you a good guess on that, because the capital projects, I'm not sure where we stand on getting cost of capital projects, you know, Ingrid, delayed a whole lot.
I will add to that. Is she talking? I can't hear her. We're just now getting bids in. Ingrid, stand up. Come over here to the podium. And that was part of where we went yesterday with the conversation with Chris Davis and Pat, as far as this 5% ceiling went, was that we had gotten in the bid on the HVAC for Central. And so, some are coming in, but they're slow to come in. Chris Davis's office is very busy. We continue to hear that, even with the addition of staff. So, we're at the mercy of that office, getting things out for bid.
And these bids require a whole lot more than just a regular bid that we have. Since it's federal money, they have to go under the Davis Bacon Act, and that requires a whole lot of paperwork from the person submitting the bid. So, they have to do a whole lot of other things that they don't do for our normal bids. So, even though she can get it out, it's still gonna take a long time to get that back, and then it's gonna take even longer to get that project started, because everybody's doing the same thing we're doing. Everybody's spending federal money, they're doing these capital projects, and it's just gonna take a while to get that accomplished. We're gonna be pushing the limit on time. Chris Davis is working as hard as she could possibly work to get all this done. But there's just some things that you just can't speed up, and unfortunately, care is money is one of those things we just can't speed up, so.
But the 2.0, it's been approved, just, we're still in the process.
Yep.
That was gonna be my next question. Are we at risk of running out of time, because everybody's competing for the same contractors and the same? And if so, has anybody made any allowances? I mean, everybody has to know that we're competing for the same contractors.
Everybody does, and that's why we tried to push ours through at the first, to make sure that we had everything approved and ready to go as fast as we could. And we did not delay on any of our submissions, so all that was taken care of. And we've moved as fast as we can. It will cut it down to the wire, and I don't know if we'll have any problems. Right now, it's, we're okay for everything, but it could cut us down very, very close to being, meeting that deadline. And I would think, since the whole nation is under the same problems that we're under, if there is a problem with getting that spent, there may be some amendments to those timelines. So, I'm hoping that if we get down to that, and 90% of the nation is in the same boat we're in, we'll probably see some kind of changes on that.
And then the 3.0, we're just starting that process, really. We-
That's right. We, that's why we went ahead and submitted, at least we could at least get it approved. And then if you all decided that you wanted to change something, we could change that. But that's why we pushed that, so we can get it in. It's not due till the 27th of August.
They'll do that for the 31st.
31st of August, and we've been told that they'll review it as fast as they can. But we're gonna go ahead and get what we can get done and get it approved, so we can start, because the later we wait, the farther behind we are in line to get something.
I would add that I think out of the 2.0, I thought we got the biggest bang for our buck. I thought whoever's responsible for that did a really good job. That, those roofs and things that we fixed are, that was a good way to spend that money. And I don't know if now's the time or not on the 3.0, but I guess, if it's not, I'll wait till that time.
What is the deadline, deadline on 2.0? Tell everything finished? I thought it was 2024, but-
Yeah, 2024, and it was 2025, and 2026.
So, it's not like we're under the gun for next year. It's just a matter of-
No, this is not a June 30th date for any of us, and we're good on that. But with the amount of money and the projects that's going on in the nation, it's gonna be, just like it would be in June 30th. We're gonna have to press to get it.
When we're talking about spending this 3.0 money, it says all renovations must meet the criteria of to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus, allowable, HVAC, but not allowable examples of permitted changes. Is it allowable to add on to a building, to extend, or?
If you can improve social distancing, yes, you can add on. I don't think of construction of a new building is allowable, but you can add on and increase your social distancing capabilities.
They have to be created.
I see what you're saying. We can justify it by-
You have to be able to horticult your classroom.
There you go.
So, I would say about 2.0.
You can hand on the E.O. stuff.
We know it's going out in 2.0, and what-
Like a new Hughes, just hand on and close down the open.
What's kind of the, we know that we spent $300,000 for E-rate, which was for the technology upgrades. We know that was a set fix rate that would be gone. I feel at this point, we, correct me if I'm wrong, Ingrid, but I feel confident that we have repaid food service for all of their lost income. The nurses, that was a one-time expense, so we know that that is set and gone. And buses, buses for the summer program next summer could cost us a little bit of money still, but the rest that comes back will have towards capital projects, and so that'll just be what the bids are and what we have to expend there. But most, everything is already spent and done, except for the capital projects out of 2.0. And so, in 3.0, the capital projects, we have 16, a little over 16,4, that can be spent. And so, when we have submitted, and we have submitted 3.0 fully, knowing we're gonna be resubmitting and resubmitting and resubmitting. But what we put in there was obviously architect fees, because we need an architect to do that for us. A project manager to oversee the capital building projects. We listed renovations at East High School, Mary Hughes, and Indian Springs. Obviously, that's adjustable to whatever the board desires. And I put that quote in there, because we have the distinct pleasure of getting to listen to Edgar webinars, and this was a quote that was in there, I couldn't, I lost count, that all renovations have to meet the criteria to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus. So, it is very important how we write those up, because it has to do things like social distance, increase air quality, reduce the possibility of mold, or we'll do that sort of thing. So, as the board looks at the capital projects list, as you all get that back, just remember that that is something that we'll have to look at.
Currently, and also with the conversation yesterday, we have found that we have to do an RFQ for architect services. Chris Davis's office is handling that right now. To put that out, we had prior met with-